Thank you.
Hey Tracy.
Are we ready?
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna open the-
I left in a hurry.
Monday, December ninth, two thousand nineteen, Selectman Meeting at about six thirty-two. Can we please stand and pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance.
Goodbye, United States of America, to whom all the poets stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we don't have anyone for public comment. Kathy, do you mind reading the warrant?
I don't mind at all. So, approve warrant, payroll warrant, twenty dash twenty-five for one hundred fifty-nine thousand, seven dollars and twenty-four cents.
Any other further questions? All in favor?
Yes.
And make a motion to approve bill warrant twenty dash twenty-five for one million, two hundred sixty-four thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars, ninety-one cents. Do you want to break down on that?
Please, and thank you.
Okay, town, ninety-seven thousand, two hundred forty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. What's WS?
Water and sewer.
Water and sewer, got it. Forty-four thousand, one seventy-nine, ninety-seven. Payroll withholding, fifty thousand, nine eighty-seven, sixty-six. Debt payment, fifty-eight thousand, eight eighty-one, twenty-five cents. Light bills, one hundred eight thousand, eight hundred eighty dollars, eighty-two cents. Grants and revolving, fourteen thousand, five hundred thirty-four dollars, eighty-five cents. Penn tucket assessment, eight hundred twenty-two thousand, forty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. Essex North Shore assessment, sixty-seven thousand, four hundred sixteen dollars. And that should add up to the total that I motioned for.
Let me get a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. We have the minutes from November twelfth, two thousand nineteen, to be approved. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve, minutes from November twelfth, two thousand nineteen, they all seem to be in order.
I have a change. Bring your attention to page two, Finance Director's time. Rennie Cal, we're working on getting the Christmas tree for the town hall in Allen Park. I believe Allen Park ought to be Elm Park instead of Allen Park.
Yeah, good catch.
Is that it?
That's all I found, yeah.
So, approve him as amended?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. So, moving on, we have this discussion and possible vote. We have Chief Robert Valentine here to welcome him to our fire department and have a few words. If you don't mind going up to the podium. We basically had you in tonight to welcome you as our new fire chief, let the town people get a face or whatever.
Thank you.
I know they had a, I was over, or the last Sunday or the Sunday before, to the station. They had your penning over there, it was a good time, but we had a lot of relatives go there and friends and what have you, and the firemen.
Yes.
So, I also know that you bought a house in town, which is good.
Correct.
So, everything seems like it's moving in the right direction for you to come into the town and, which I think your feet are already down running, aren't they?
Yes, absolutely.
You started, what, December first, was it?
Yeah, it started December first. Did the swearing-in. I stayed overnight in the station because of the snowstorm.
Oh wow.
My family went back to Rhode Island and went right to work.
Oh, good for you. Does anyone have anything they want to say to Bob? Bob, do you mind me calling you up?
Not at all.
I'll start. Welcome aboard, we're glad to have you. Hopefully, you will make a tremendous impact on the community in the service of new fire chief. I'm glad to have you.
I look forward to it.
If there's anything we can do, please notice it's a two-way street. Communication is always key. If we don't know about it, we can't help you.
True.
I'd just like to welcome aboard and good luck and hopefully we'll see you here. If you've got any problems.
Absolutely.
Open communications, that's positive.
It'll work.
Yep, I echo the sentiments of the board and we're very pleased to have you here. I also liked your suggestion, though, that you might come in on some type of a regular basis and give us an update on what's going on.
Absolutely.
I feel like rather than waiting till we have so many problems, let's, maybe we can handle them in smaller bundles.
Absolutely.
If we met, maybe with public safety, I don't know, once every month or every so often, so that we don't just wait till there's a problem. Seems like that's all we do is wait for problems. I'd rather hear some good news.
Absolutely, yes. Good news is much better.
Yeah, it is, so, I liked your suggestion to us that maybe that'd be a good idea.
So, what I was gonna ask is, once you get your feet down and running, maybe about a month's time, if you can get ahold of me or I'll get ahold of you.
Absolutely.
Get in, get a look around, see what's going on and if you can come back and kind of give us a little bit of an overlay of what you're thinking and, you know, get a little snapshot of what's going on and what you think.
Yeah, and I did the webinar today for the budget, so I'm getting ready to put the budget together and right after that's done, I'll be more than happy to sit down and, or stand here and give you an update and which direction we'd like to run.
Yep, I know before we had our old chief in, we tried to have him in a little too much, I think it got a little bit overbearing, so-
Right.
Months a month or something like that, we'll see how it goes and-
Yeah.
Everything's running smoothly, we don't, we don't need to eyeing anything out, I think we're running good, we're good. But, the only reason I'd like to see you for the first time is just to get an update and let the town people get an update what's going on over there and what have you.
Right, and-
I think it'd be good.
We're all in new waters, so-
Exactly.
Like I said, meeting, it's not every month, if it's every other month, just to give you an update that we're doing this, we're setting this goal and we're moving this.
Perfect.
Keep everybody in communication, that way if somebody comes up to you and says, hey, what's going on, you know.
Right, right.
It's always better to know ahead of time than say, what are you talking about? And then have to come ask.
Well, again, I thank you, I'm sure the board has also their two piece and-
Yes.
Good luck and hope we all move forward and again, like I said, I want to say thank you to you guys and I know Kurt's not here for stepping up and filling in and I know they, I didn't get it out Sunday because I'm not a good speaker, but I was gonna thank the department because it was a long time, you know, getting this process done and they put up with a lot, the men did too.
Yes.
Trying to get the process done, so I left that part out, I wanted to say it, but I didn't, but the men all deserve a good thank you as well, too.
I was gonna add, we were, prior to this period right now where there's a lot of other stuff on the agenda, we were trying to go through the different town buildings. We had made it through Water and Sewer and VZ, right? Were those the only ones we've been through? So, eventually we were gonna go to public safety and highways, so maybe think about when you'd want us to tour the buildings.
Absolutely.
And see, you know, see firsthand, that way when you come in to talk about something that's-
You know what I'm talking about, absolutely.
Needs to be fixed, I'll have a general, I won't know, I have a general idea of what it is we're talking about, because I-
Better knowledge of it.
Haven't seen, I haven't even seen the highway facility, so I really haven't seen some of the buildings. On, oh, on the Capitol thing? Oh, yes, well, we were, prior to each meeting, Ed was setting us up to tour a different part of town building, so we'd get to see the physical buildings rather than just talk about them. So, we stopped in November, right? So, it'd be nice maybe after the holiday to pick up again.
Absolutely.
Try and see some of the other buildings.
So, the only other thing, and I think we talked about it when we had hired you, that I asked is try to involve the public as much as we possibly can. Anything we can do, like, I call it PR, but you know what I'm saying.
Yeah.
If we have something going on, or maybe we can put something together and maybe have like a open day at the, with the fire engines out, people can come see them or whatever, just to try and involve the public a little bit, something like that.
Right.
Maybe in the spring or something.
Something I haven't seen and I haven't heard of, and I'm gonna check with the fire inspector, is October is Fire Prevention Month.
Yep.
I always thought the fire department should have an open house and have them come in, have different stations of smoke detectors and how to, when to change them, when to turn, change them out completely, when to add batteries, and then fire, like cooking safety and every year have a different reasoning. That big open house of a good day is excellent.
One of my thoughts around it was, is they say that, you know, as you guys know, volunteerism's down, no one wants to volunteer, but I thought if we got the kids at a young age in there and let them see the fire engines and let them, you know, as they come up the line, they may be inquisitive, hey, I wanna go join the fire department, you know what
I mean? Absolutely, that's what got me into it.
If we keep moving them, moving them through and having things for them, it might help them.
Yeah, absolutely.
Get more, you know, as they grow up the line, we'll get volunteers. I don't even mean, I mean, even teenagers, we'll invite them as well, I mean, let them see what's going on, see how nice it is and, you know, how it's operated.
Yep, absolutely.
I know Bill had something he wanted to say.
Yeah, just a real, couple of quick questions. I know it's early on in your tenure, so I won't, you know, hold you anything, but have you thought about any initial goals for yourself or for the department? Say, you know, one month out, three months out, six months out, one year out? And like I said, I know it's, you're only eight days, nine days into your tenure, so I know it's early on, but have you thought about that at all?
Right, yes. I had a quick meeting with the offices last Tuesday night. We had a good conversation of some of the goals that we'd like to look at and set. I have a meeting with the firefighters tomorrow night at six o'clock. I want their ideas and then gonna take all their ideas, put them down and prioritize everything, see what needs to be done, instead of what wants to be done. We all have our wants. I have to set the priorities for the needs and then bring it back to the offices and have a conversation and move from there. So, the initial goals are to set the priorities that we need to get set.
So, maybe one of the first-
One of the first meetings would be perfect to come back and say, yes, we've set our priorities, this is what we need to get done.
And then hopefully try to align them with the board, the budget and everything else, so we can all accomplish the goals that you set.
Yep, absolutely.
Super, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Ed.
I know Joe had worked on some repairs that needed to be done and worked on a list of that, but, you know, maybe, you know, you can take a look at that, add something to it. I know some of these town buildings are, need some major work.
Right.
And it would be nice to draw up one warrant article to take care of it all. We wouldn't let, we wouldn't let our homes that we live in deteriorate like we have some of these town buildings with some problems, so, I know Joe was pretty good with a list, but-
You might, coming in from the outside, you might see something that needs to be done.
Very good.
All set?
Almost.
Thank you very much for coming in, taking the time. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much, thank you.
So, moving on, we have the discussion, Town Manager Continued Discussion. Anyone want to start with that?
Okay, guess I'll go. I know the last time we discussed more, to move forward with more qualifications now that we've kind of pretty much ironed out responsibilities, duties, things like that. So, I think we should now start to narrow it in on what we're looking for. How many years, minimum years of experience are we looking for? Are we looking for a minimum of a degree? Do we want a minimum of a bachelor's or are we looking for a master's? What kind of degree should it be in? All these I, business admin. Kind of narrow, you know. To not cast such a wide net. Everyone said you can't boil the ocean, so, you know, a little part of it, maybe we can be successful in that, in our goal to find the right fit for what we're looking for and what the needs are.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Ed.
I looked over all of these job descriptions that we were handed. Sterling, Harvard, Mass, Salisbury, West Newbury, Rowley, Georgetown, Westminster, Lexington, and a couple of others. And most of them were looking for, I wrote, I just wrote a bunch of things down. It seemed to be pretty consistent with both, with all of them. A minimum of a bachelor's degree in public administration with a master's degree preferred, but, and most of them was five years' experience in public administration at a management level. Strong leadership qualities. Experience with preparation and management. West Newbury used the word considerable experience as a town manager or administrator. Experience negotiating collective bargaining agreements. Experience in town management, some of these might be duplicates. Experience with demonstrated track record in conflict management and resolution. And one thing that I, that I mentioned here was Massachusetts Class D Operator's License at a minimum. To operate an automobile to perform in-town and out-of-town travel to town business, travel to night meetings was a possibility. Excellent written and oral communication skills. Ability to establish and maintain effective working relationship with employees, boards, committees, public. Ability to direct the work of department heads as well as professionals and other subordinates, including office staff. Ability to plan, organize and direct the development, to project the preparation of report analysis problems and formulate recommendations. Those were, most of those were listed in all of these in some way, all of these job descriptions that we had. And most were looking for some kind of experience at administrator or a town manager or administration or an assistant.
Okay, Kathy, do you have anything?
Yeah, well, I think we need to, similar to what we did when we did the responsibilities, I think we just need to keep it kind of simple because it's, it's what you want as to screen out people that are applying for the job, right? That's what we're looking for, we're not looking for their duties, we did all that, but I like the wording, a master's degree or an equivalent specialized, they use the term master craftsman, I'm not real fond of that terminology, but equivalent specialized level of knowledge in political science, political administration or related field. I particularly would prefer somebody with at least five years in local government, so they're not coming straight from private industry into municipal, because that's very different municipal, so at least, at least five years in public government. And I would like at least five years supervisory experience to make sure that they're just not coming up from school or trading jobs and getting retrained to jump out as a town manager. You know, we want somebody who has at least a municipal base knowledge and I think the master's degree is kind of what you're looking for nowadays. I mean, most people in the higher level jobs get their master's degree. You know, teachers have to do it, it's not that big a deal anymore like it used to be, so it seems to be that's the state of the thing. So, I think like, like I said, five years in municipal, five years supervisory, master's degree or equivalent specialized level of knowledge in political science, public administration or related field, that sounds all right to me. They need to have, of course, the required knowledge, skills and abilities to perform all the functions we defined, so that covers everything, you know, negotiation, everything. So, that's, I think that's all we really need to, if you were trying to look what you need to post it with.
I just want to ask a question of the, so, the five years' experience and five years as a manager, you'd want them, you want all the years' experience to be as a manager?
I like five years as supervisory, at least have had superv, have people working under them.
But you want-
And then five years in municipal specifically, so that they're not coming just from private industry, that's where I was, I was a little concerned if you hire right from private industry, they don't know all the municipal-
Right.
-ins and outs, which-
I totally agree with you, but I'm just asking, are we saying we want five years in municipal and five years as a manager, so basically-
Or supervisory, not a manager, yeah.
But, if you're gonna be paying that kind of money, I would rather have the five years manager as well as the five years administrator.
Okay.
And a master's degree as well, five years, I think. And I personally think five years in computer, you know, in computer knowledge, I know you gotta, they gotta have the computer knowledge because they're the person running the show and something's gonna fall in their lap, they're gonna need that.
Computer literacy. Well, you could say computer literacy, I mean, we can question, put questions in there.
I also think that the person needs to have experience with town, dealing with lawyers and town council and negotiating contracts.
So, contract negotiation.
Right, contracts as well. And then I wrote, department, you know, dealing with department heads, have some experience with dealing with department heads, negotiating contracts. I'd like to see a political science degree. Local government, so they've been in local government for at least five years somehow, some way, like Bill said, I don't want to take them from the outside that runs a factory company and doesn't have the knowledge, I definitely want to have the five years' knowledge of running government or being in the government somehow, some way, in that role. And a financial background in government business, town business.
Right. You said one, I think I forgot, was the personnel, so you're saying like personnel management experience, yeah.
Right, right.
That's a good one.
Go ahead, Ed.
Just to expand on what you said about the computer literacy, we should make sure that we list out the type of system that the town is using so that the person has, is familiar with that.
Well, I think you're gonna find, is it very unique, Caitlin, some of the systems we use and can you, can you tell us?
Our system is a little different than other towns, I think there's like three or four big ones out there and we're one of them. I mean, they're not hard to learn, but it's definitely takes a little bit of time.
So, maybe we want to experience with such and such-
With our VA system or-
Is software is a plus.
Microsoft.
You'd have to, you'd have less training costs and downtime and inefficiency while the person's getting up to speed on a new system or software.
Right.
I don't know how you put this one, but I think the person definitely needs to have the right personality to deal with the public, to deal with people and be able to deal with situations.
Communication.
Communication, situations, whatever, I think that we, that you gotta have the right person in that position. So, do we want to try and come up with a list or do you want to, how do you want to go about it?
Yeah, I think that's the best. I think that's the best approach at it now.
So, why don't, I'll start with my list and why don't we see what everyone thinks and then if they think it should be put on a piece of paper, maybe Caitlin can throw it on a piece of paper for us? Five years, I said five to eight years' experience in administration and management degree, at least five years for the position and a master's degree as well. Is everyone on board with that or not?
Well, let me ask you this. If the person has a bachelor's degree and ten years' experience and is working toward a, would we substitute experience for education? And would we say, an MBA would be a plus or working towards would be a plus, but experience could be substituted for education in certain cases? I mean, there is no better teacher than experience.
Oh, I agree with that. Up to the board.
Most of the job descriptions that I looked at, they said a bachelor's degree in public administration, five years, there was one was three to five, most of them were five years and with a bachelor, with a master's degree preferred, but it just a minimum of a bachelor's degree and a master's degree preferred. It did mention five years in public administration.
Right, I mean, I think what we want to try to avoid is shooting for the stars and creating a position that not only doesn't exist, but we can't afford.
Right, I agree.
So, maybe sticking with a bachelor's.
Like we did with the fire chief, I mean, we're shooting for the stars and what have you and we built in the package, some schooling, you know what I mean? But this position is going to be running that town government and what have you, so I don't want to, I want to make sure I have the right person in there with the right knowledge and what have you that gets in there and gets their feet down and running and that's all, I would, that's all. I mean, we can, whatever you guys think is comfortable, I'm only one of four or five, I just want as much experience as I can get. And we went out, what, two times for the fire chief and other departments, like the highway, if we have to go out, do it out once and go twice if that's what the town people decide they want to do, but I mean, I don't know.
Well, I think we do it till we get it right.
It's a very important position, it's gonna probably pay some money that, if we do do it and the town people do do it, it's gonna be some money, you know, it's gonna be a top-paying job and it's gonna be the top person in town. I want to make sure they have the knowledge. Sorry, go ahead.
It's gonna be expensive. The town of West Newbury, our neighbors, starting salary of one hundred forty-five thousand, fiscal year twenty-twenty, because they hired them in FY nineteen, fiscal year twenty-twenty, one hundred forty-seven-nine, fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, one hundred fifty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight, so it's not, it's not something that's inexpensive, it's gonna be expensive. And then, in addition to, maybe another employee or two, maybe a part-time employee along with a full-time person.
I think what we have to do is present it to the town people, let them, let them make the end of the day decision. I think that's the right way to do it and present it to the people and, as long as we can put all the knowledge out there and let them make their decision on it, but I definitely think if you, you're gonna be definitely the more schooling, knowledge, I'm up for that. So, you guys?
Yeah, well, I am-
Clearly understand that there's, there's a salary that goes along with that.
Right, I got you, I got you, I got you.
And I agree with Sluckman Dunn being the concern that we're a much smaller town and we don't have the per capita money that a town like West Newbury has to spread around. We don't have that type of valuation, we don't have that much cash, that's what sets the budget in this town is the amount of money that's collected. So, we, we need to be wary of, you know, posting a job that somebody who's coming from a very affluent town or a much bigger city would expect to get.
Right.
That being said, I sort of like the wording here of experience with demonstrated track record in conflict management and resolution. That's one of the job qualifications in this posting. Do you like that wording?
Yeah, I'm just trying, what I was trying to do was just get the years in the degree, the years in degree right now.
Okay, so bachelor's degree in public administration, business management, it says or closely related field. Master's preferred, if you want to put it that way, will obviously give more credence to someone who has their masters, but I like the benchmark of at least five years' experience as a municipal administrator. This kind of capital, this puts both of mine into one sentence. Five years' experience as a municipal administrator, that would mean they're supervising and they're in municipal, in the public field, so that does it for me.
Plagiarize the whole thing, I like it.
I do, I like this one a little bit.
I just like to have, I like to have either a bachelor's or I want, I want to have schooling involved into it.
Yes, so, do you want to just say masters preferred, the bachelor's has to be in public administration? If they don't have that in public administration or something like that. Political science, nah, bachelor's in that, nah. You'd have to have your masters then in addition, because political science is not how to run a town, public administration is geared toward that.
Right. If you're gonna go sell this to the town people and ask the town people to fund this-
Yes.
I don't think you can take it out to the town people and ask the town people and not have built in a good package, the town people are gonna want to know, if they're gonna end up voting for this and paying for it, they're going to get the top-notch person in that position to do the job and to do it day one, and that's how I feel.
Right, but it has to be- Right, but it has to be top-notch within our salary framework, I mean, we're certainly not gonna.
So what happens if we can't afford?
What's our highest?
What's, what happens if we can't afford a hundred and fifteen? We shouldn't, we shouldn't even be sitting here talking about this.
I think we're, we're within bounds of that list that Denise gave us, that had all the towns, if you look at towns that have um evaluations similar to ours. You know what I mean, if you look at the, the, the per capita base in the other towns, I forget where it is, it's a long list, oh, this. So there's, the, the salaries are a bit all over the place, but we've already been like creating this position in steps. By dumping additional responsibilities into the finance director's job. So we already made the big leap, which was to finance director, and that job started at fifty-five thousand, I think, and. We flipped through quite a few people, and then with Greg, it really, that's where it really jumped up as he took on more responsibilities.
Right, but if that position right now is paying, say, one thirteen, and we're gonna go to one forty-five or one fifty, whatever.
I don't know that we're going, when, I think that's a discussion we should have after we solidify this job description, and then take a look.
But you can't solidify that job description if you don't know what you, if we don't know what kinda degrees and what, and what our, our qualifications are gonna be. We don't know what kinda money we're gonna be looking at, you know what I mean? So if we build this light, we're gonna get light pay, someone that wants light pay.
This, yes, we're not, I don't think we're building it too light right now, I think we're keeping it um open, we're saying that you have to have. At least a bachelor's degree in public administration, you know, or a master's in public administration, let's put those two as the minimum.
That's fine with me, I just wanna have something in there.
Five years, I see, you have it, that word, it's worded well there, and five years of municipal supervisory experience. Municipal administrator experience, I like the word administrator, meaning they had to administrate, not just supervise, yeah. So, and then experience, you said, with conflict resolution and contracts.
Right.
So that's personnel, right?
Right, and then we had.
And computer literacy.
The computer.
Computer literacy, yeah.
I mean, oral skills, that's all gonna fall under, that's all gonna fall under the, you know, the person you're gonna hire, they're the, you know. Dealing with town council and lawyers and contracts, I mean, you got the right person, they're gonna be able to handle all that. Dealing with department heads, that comes with experience, they should have that with the experience. Administrator, that would come with the qualifications, experience.
Do you wanna say three to five years in public communication?
Yeah, that would be good, put that in there, yeah, yeah.
Three to five years, so that they, they can't just be someone who's been closed in an office and not had experience with communicating with the public.
Right, and we should probably put in there, uh five years experience with a financial background in town government, if we can.
Okay.
How about uh experience with grant writing and, and preparation?
Okay, I think Caitlin's, we're getting way ahead of her.
Preparation?
Did you get, I think we said two things and then that third.
Five plus years with.
The person, we don't write that in.
Public administration.
There was the communication, yeah, I mean, what was yours, Bill, again?
What?
Five plus years with public administration, the second one.
No.
What was, after the communication one?
I said.
Um, public, public administration, dealing with a, have had five years experience in public administration. And then I said five year uh financial background in town, in town government.
She didn't get that one, huh?
Oh.
Yeah, sorry, we're going too fast.
That's okay.
I know Bill wants, let me get a minute, go ahead, Bill.
We, we didn't get Ed's yet, so we got yours. Hang on one second.
Experience with, with, with grant writing.
Oh, you got that.
Preparation and a management.
Okay.
Okay, now, Bill.
I just wanna go back to the first point where we talked administration as opposed to manager. I, I, what I don't wanna see is a, a tractor paper pusher, somebody who's just an admin. So I think the verbiage, maybe we should change from, what was that opening line, read that, uh experience with the public.
Five years experience.
Municipal.
Municipal administration experience with demonstrated track record in conflict management and resolution.
Uh, I think at the beginning.
I think Caitlin's got it right.
Oh, maybe Caitlin has it, or might have another.
What's the first line of the, what's the first sentence?
The first sentence, hers was, was bachelor's degree in public administration.
Yeah.
Business management or closely related field.
No, she's, she's reading off the um.
And then.
Where you said, uh, experience with town administration.
Yep, yep, I'll find that one, that's not this one, there's so many of these.
I must think we should change that to town management.
Well, here's one, how about this?
I don't know if it's the same thing.
So put administration slash town management.
Well, this would maybe, uh, three to five years supervisory slash management experience and accounting slash finance experience in municipal government.
That covers it all, right there.
This, let me just mark it, I just found it, it's better.
This one's better than the other one?
Well, it takes into account the financial thing, so.
I would also add, um, experience with whatever systems we have is a plus. Budgeting experience. We want somebody that's familiar with the budgeting process, especially in a public setting.
Town, town government budgeting process. Anyone else have anything they wanna add?
I think we've covered.
I think we're, we're going down the right path, I mean, most job. Application descriptions, right, when you look at it, it help wanted ad, it will list the title, it will list. Typically, not necessarily in this order, it'll either list your qualifications or the duties, and the last thing is usually the salary. And that's whoever's doing the hiring, right?
Right.
So, while I agree, there's no, there's, you can't dispute the facts that some towns pay a hundred and forty-seven thousand, well. We don't have to, I mean, once we, once we set the qualifications and the roles and the title all down, we also can set the salary.
Right.
And if, much like in other processes, if we don't get qualified bites. Then we adjust our qualifications, our duties or our salary in proportion so that we get the right candidate and the right fit. But I don't think we're bound by any, any other towns, what they're paying. You're gonna find people like uh our town planner that was working for a larger community in a smaller role.
Right.
But said, this is really, you know, my chance to um carve my own, you know, path.
Right, I know.
Uh, so you get some of those energetic people that, you know, the go-getters that wanna move up.
Right.
That have the kind of experience in a larger setting.
Yep.
Now wanna take on a bigger role in a smaller one.
Did we, did we get covered, um, five years experience with um town council contracts and. Lawyer or whatever, however you wanna word that, did we have something in there for that?
I have that on one of the pages, town council and contracts.
So what, what Denise did for us, she, is she made like this long, long thing, and then we just chopped it up, which worked well, right? That we, we were able to go through and go check, no check, and then when, when it was redundant, we just crossed things off. So that made it easy.
Okay.
We wanna use the same format she did, that was like we had this big list.
So we're not gonna do what we're doing tonight?
Oh, you wanna, well, cause we don't have the same list in front of us, we're all talking about the same things over and over, it seems like.
Right, but I was trying to feed it over to Caitlin and have Caitlin jot it down. But that's all right, however you wanna go about it.
That's what she's doing, and then if she can put it in, in a rather neat format.
For the next meeting, you want it in that format, so you guys can all choose which qualifications you want?
Right, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And maybe we can adjust, add to, subtract from.
That's what I'm trying to get everyone, give the input to her, and then we'll have it next meeting and.
Right, absolutely.
Does anyone have anything else they wanna add?
Yeah, we should be looking for someone that has a, a demonstrated, or has demonstrated um experience in some of these things, we want like contract negotiation.
Right.
Like um, um, dealing with the selectmen.
Right. Police and fire and all that, contracts and highway and all, try to find someone with, with, that has experience and all that stuff. And that's what they'll end up being doing as a manager anyway, so. And my question is, I guess it's premature.
This person need to be bonded?
Yes, I would think so, I would think, but I'm not positive.
One of the things was, you have here was experienced negotiating collective bargaining, bargaining agreements. And uh, that covers, that covers a good area.
I think, I don't know, you've, Ed, you've looked through these as, as probably as many times as I have. But I think this was the one that I liked, the way it was set up, the categories, like if we could start picking a format and titles. We'd be able to put all this stuff into a, cause we're gonna be in the unenviable position right now of having to type this up, I think, within our board to keep it. With us, so that everybody in the town can apply for.
Once we come out with it, and then should give, give it back to us?
Right, she could type it up, but we have to give a, we'd have to write some of this verbiage, and we'd have to pick a, a framework and titles. They have, statement of duties is pretty straightforward, supervision seems to be consistent in some. I liked this idea of essential functions, for the list we made, all those jobs, the responsibilities, I thought that could go in there. And then we're doing tonight, this, the minimum, the qualifications section. So, I mean, we have like twenty job descriptions here to choose from, we have to pick a format. If we're gonna tell Caitlin to start putting this stuff into it. Right? Cause we have to have something that's typed up to present.
I suppose so.
Yeah, I mean, you can't just go in with a list, we, we're gonna be.
Oh, I, I, I agree.
Yeah.
Do we, my question would be, do we need to pick the format tonight?
Well, it'd be nice for everyone to look through them and come up with the general categories that we're gonna use, the headers.
Right.
You know. You know, it gets pretty straightforward.
Do you wanna add that to, to the next meeting discussion along with the checklist of qualifications, led a, a format?
Well, if you want, you know what I could do, I don't know if I have all of them still, is make a little chart that has these titles, just the titles from one town, that would be easy to do.
Why don't we do this tonight, why don't we take, I mean, we gotta narrow down all those, I mean, there's so many of them. And I left mine in my office, so I don't even have a copy of them right now, that we can narrow, narrow it down, maybe to a couple formats or a format. And then next week, we'll plug it in, once Caitlin takes all that and puts it all neat and down.
I think she's got most of it now.
Right.
She just compiles that and, and then we'll, we'll take a look at it.
This is so much paper.
But I think what they're saying is they wanna put into a format, which.
Well, she can, she could just grab one of these and just, they're all basically the same.
No, they're diff, they're different, like West Newbury's is like a book, I don't quite really like that format, I like, I like this little more straightforward thing here. That's similar to the one from Salisbury.
Can I just see that for a minute, the one that you, you're thinking?
This one, it's a little bit long, but it's like easy to follow, it makes sense.
Yeah.
This is a contract, so this we don't have to look at contracts.
Right, this is actually getting into the, into the verbiage of, the breaking down the verbiage and everything else.
Well, that's, I think what we've done for the most part.
Yeah.
And what we continue to, to do narrowly defined. But like I said, I think the format is more styled and substantive, you know, how pretty it's gonna look based more than hey, what's?
What's building it, what's building it, that's what, that's what I was trying to do tonight, is get what's building it.
Okay, well, we.
We've got another, I think we've got another foundation of the block and the foundation here.
Right, type it up, next meeting, give us what you've got, and then um we can maybe, next meeting, talk about what's.
How we'd like the format, the job description.
Do you want me to bring a sample of the one that the town of Groveland uses too, for the format?
Oh, that would be.
Oh, we have a sample?
Yeah.
Thank goodness.
And we have, we have a format, well, what do you know, look at that.
What do you know?
Thank you, Caitlin's.
You should probably just follow the one that we're guarding you.
You are the best, thank you, I'm looking at this pile of paperwork.
Exactly.
You know.
Right, so give us the one that she always chooses.
Use the one that Denise always uses, yeah.
And then.
We'll adapt what we have.
We'll have two pieces of paper.
Okay.
Can you kinda put our pieces into that then?
Sure.
And we talk about the, we'll talk about the discussion.
Is there gonna be any personnel duties, qualifications?
Yeah.
That's, that's.
That's kinda not in.
Well, it's in the list of duties.
The qualifications, but it is in.
It's in the duty, okay.
Goals and responsibilities.
I should have it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
On you, when you word this, you, you, town managers, a continued discussion, and put in a parentheses exactly what we're talking about, we're talking about the job.
Qualifications.
Qualifications in format.
As opposed to the job duties and descriptions.
Job qual.
So that narrows it down, we know that's what we're doing. All right, so we can move on from there?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're moving on to the Comcast renewal, continued discussion.
Yes.
So, um, as, I know Kathy wasn't here last meeting, but we kind of, I think she got brought up to speed. The meeting that we need to have with the town, we are go, we need to run that meeting. It's not the responsibility of the cable advisory board, it's our responsibility, and Denise, having conversation with Denise. She's gonna hold that, I'll schedule it for in January, after the holidays, so that will be all set, and it's not gonna stop the um, any kind of talks or anything, cause. As long as that meeting takes place before the end of the um talks with the Comcast people, that will cover us. So that being said, actually.
Do we have an exact date, January?
Not yet, because she was going to wait till I talk to you guys and um see what is available, if, if you guys are good for that.
Yeah, thank you, that's all, I just wanted to know if there was any date, so I could put it down now.
Okay, so the next piece was when you left last meeting with you, Bill, and you and Kathy and Tracy, we're gonna try and get together and fill in those pieces. I know Kathy did some work already, and she showed me early in the evening, but we need to just get those, plug in those two pieces of paper, and um. That he was looking for.
I read nothing back, so I couldn't help anyone.
Okay.
Which is I asked a volunteer.
So, just, just all I did was I looked at what Chris had done, like those pages that Bill Hewig gave you.
Yep.
That looks like Chris's sheet.
Uh-huh.
And there's still some blanks, there's still some answers, questions on that, that he didn't fill in, where he said he didn't know the replacement cost, but that's two hundred and twenty thousand. Is about ten thousand more than everything that I could add up, add it up to, he had some blanks with question marks.
Yep.
The sixty thousand, I came to that by looking at what Denise had given me, that showed me five years of salaries, and I took the highest year. And then I bumped it up three percent a year for ten years.
Okay.
Cause I thought, you need to have enough salary to fund.
Yep, makes sense.
Pay the people that help us do this.
Right, makes sense.
And then, this is the one thing that I, I spoke with Mike Wood, maybe Bill or Ed, if you know about this stuff, I don't. There's something that Bill Hewig wrote about, that he went to a cable meeting, that the connection between these buildings and the uploading. That we might have to, in the next contract, take this over, he said something to effect that Comcast will throw this back on the town.
Do you know, Tracy, what she's talking about?
It's in that letter.
Okay.
Is it in their proposal?
No, it's in the letter that Bill Hewig sent to them, telling them what to do, and it said, this, the word coaxial, but in looking at the, the. What he's describing, it sounds like it's the connection between these buildings and that uploading, that um. The town might be solely responsible, we might need money.
But in, but in contract negot, that would be something I think that we could probably try to, when we get into the contract negotiations, we can maybe bick a back and forth.
Well, yes, but you need a number, he said two hundred to four hundred, so Mike Wood said he could maybe look into it.
Okay.
Cause he's very knowledgeable in that area, I am not.
Okay, if you can ask him that, keep on him for that.
So Mike Wood, would this number here then could change, this two hundred here, so. We can back all this up with all those pages from Chris, with all those numbers on it. So that's all, that'll look like the business plans that everybody else has, this is just summarizing it.
Can you tell me if that's an email from September?
Oh, let me see. Right here, yes, he said, the issues with the so-called passive coaxial network. Meaning an old outdated INET connecting four buildings in the town. Comcast currently runs this outdated system, and that means they will want to get out of it and turn it over to the town, this is from Bill Hewig to us. It really should be replaced by a new fiber optic system, which my notes indicated would run around two hundred K, but he's uncertain. Funding this will be an issue, we don't want the town have to fund this, so whatever this involves, if it's gonna happen in the next ten years. So, whatever this involves, if it's gonna happen in the next ten years, we need to know."
Right. So, but, but, my point is, if they're going to not pay for it, we don't have to submit it to them, we're gonna end up paying for it, right? Because they're not gonna, they're not gonna give us the money possibly, right? If not, we're gonna go in and negotiate for it and then let them kick back at us and say, forget it, we're not gonna negotiate. So I would go in there and put a higher number in there. I would put a higher number, I'd put three hundred in there. Go in to negotiate for it and let them come back to us and say, no, we're not gonna do it.
Well, he's saying they're gonna push it back on us.
Well, if they're not gonna pay for it, they're gonna push it on us.
No, it's not pay, like the running of it, I thought, that they don't, they want to get out of it.
That sounds like it's infrastructure to me, doesn't it to you?
That they want to get out of running it.
Right, running the lines, running the piping and the lines, I think is what that, I think that's what that is, if I, if I'm correct. I'm pretty sure.
I'm not certain of what it is, so that's why I...
Well, did Mike say hit, look into it?
Yes.
All right, so let Mike look into it, and if you can follow up with him on that number.
Okay.
And Chair, if I, if I may, would we in that case try to bump up our replacement capital cost over the next ten years? By that amount, saying, this is a capital investment that we're going to need to make?
Right.
And then, kind of, I'm saying this in public meetings, they're kind of stupid now, but you kind of bury it in that number.
Right.
But now it's cats out, so...
Well, but I mean, it, it's a capital expense, so capital expense is a capital expense, you cover it.
It's included in the total capital number on this sheet.
No, what Bill's saying is, if, if it comes back, we don't know until we negotiate. That's the problem. We don't know if they're gonna cover or not until we negotiate. So it might be too late then.
Right now, I know the initial proposal eliminates, eliminated all capital payments...
I know.
From our last ten-year contract, so...
Right, but that's, that's a proposal.
Exactly.
That's a proposal, we need to go back in and we're gonna have to negotiate it.
Right, but just based on, on the inflation factor over the last ten years, you're looking at, if you can get that back in, one hundred and twenty-five of the two hundred.
Let's see what Mike comes up with information, and then we may have to change those numbers around a little bit.
Well, that include, it's included in this number, but you're right, you have to find out what it is and price it...
Right.
With some precision. And that's, I think, what Bill Hewig is saying. And so, that would entail like over four hundred thousand dollars of capital needs over ten years. It's, it's hard, because you look at how fast technology is changing and public access television and...
If it's a ten-year thing, then we gotta build it in, because it's not a three-year thing, so it's gotta be built in.
Gotta be built in till we're prepared for the next ten years.
Well, that's why I, I know it's against counsel's advice, but I, I still don't understand why we don't strive for shorter contract lengths.
Right.
Specifically to your point, that the technology changes so rapidly that locking up ten years, you, you, you could be three generations or more behind by the time you end that ten-year contract.
Do you want me to find out, do you want me to find out why they, why they want to go ten years?
I know why they go, want to go ten years, it's to their advantage.
No, why counsel? Why counsel's suggesting it?
He suggested it, right now let him...
Right, why?
Technology is changing, changing every year, so ten-year, who, there's nobody that can predict what the technology's gonna be in ten years.
So, you want me to find out from Bill?
Yes, even go five.
Okay.
And why, why, and bring that up about the technology changes.
Why ten-year contract? I got it, I'll find out.
You know why they want to do it, why does he recommend it?
That's what I'm saying, I'm asking Bill Hewig, why? I got it, I, I got it exactly what I gotta find out, I'll find out.
Okay.
I'll find out. And we want...
No pressure, no pressure.
No, no, we want, we want smaller...
Contract length.
Contract length, contract, Mike, cut it.
And specifically to, to guide against rapid technological changes.
Yep, perfect, I know exactly what we gotta do. Cut that under control.
Awesome.
Okay.
I actually think that's a very good negotiating position again, you know. And if we do go, if we go further, if they want to go ten years, then this could be our negotiating position right there.
Right.
We need to be, we need, we don't know what the, you know, so you're gonna have to make it worth our while.
But I'm also for the fact that I don't have to give back all five years at once in negotiation.
Right. All right.
Okay.
Okay, so that's that.
Yeah.
All right, Kathy, so, Bill, do you, do you, there was three pieces of paper we needed to get taken care of. This was one of them, the business plan, capital...
And then the public hearing.
All right, so, we got the first item is complete the survey.
You said we don't have to do it.
Don't need it.
Yeah.
Right? The business plan, we have it now. Public hearing, we're gonna take care of that in the January. State negotiations, start negotiations, which that Bill will handle, once we do our due diligence and the license expires. Okay, so once, once we get this ironed out for next meeting...
Okay.
I think we'll be good. So we gotta get on Mike Wood, let him see if he can figure it out. I'm pretty sure it's infrastructure. They don't want to do the infrastructure digging and all that, because it's expensive, and I think that's what that is. If we have to update the cables and all that.
And I, this business plan, there should be something worked into here for rent. The cable's using a, a small office over building, over at the police station. The, the cable should be paying something a month for, for rent, for, for heat, for lights, for air conditioning that... That they're not paying for. That should be added in, in, on this business plan.
Why not?
Yeah, why not?
How do we arrive at what it costs?
How do you come up with that?
How do you arrive at what it costs?
Well, that's why I'm thinking that Bill Hewig is telling us that he thinks they're gonna pull out and just dump this on us and say, fine, you, you upgrade all this, it's on you now. You do everything on your own. You upload it.
Well, then we tell them, see you later.
Well, I think that's what he was trying to tell us in that letter, that's why you, you need more capital money. If they, if they're gonna pull out of helping towns by managing the equipment in there. Do they manage it in there?
No, we do.
So what do they do?
They give us money when we have to replace stuff. They give us capital money to replace if we need... And I think that's what they're trying to get out of, not giving, am I correct, Ed? They're not trying to give us the money anymore, they're trying to get out... It's just a part of negotiation. Listen, if they don't have to give anything and make our profit, they're gonna go for it, right? So they're gonna kick back at us and say, we're not gonna give you any, any capital money, they're gonna try and pull out of it.
And I, I think there should be something put in there within, within three to five years, that they start running fiber optic.
Right.
They're, they're probably gonna block at that, but throw it in and, and it's, it's a negotiating point.
Right. So, to go back to Ed's point, do we, do we want to put something in here? How would you put that in, though? How would you put in...
But this equipment, it's our equipment in our police station, why would they pay rent on our equipment in our police station? They have nothing, they don't send people in there, do they? I mean, they don't do anything in there.
No, but they're, they're, they're giving, they're giving money to run the cable TV.
Right.
So we'd have to bump up, we'd have to bump up operational expenses.
And, and you could...
You know what I mean, you'd have to have operational.
And you could do that, because you could say, because of, of rent, rental of the space.
Well, I wouldn't even say rent, I would say, I would put a line item in here for operational expenses.
Well, if you wanted to just change this to operational, because I bumped up the salary...
Say that again, I, I don't know your point.
The salary number, I was based on everything...
When I was talking to Bill, he did say they want salary...
All broken out?
Right, they, he did say that. So we'll just put a line item in there for operational, operation expenses.
And what kind of money is that gonna entail? Because it can't be capital, we already have that.
Right, no, I know. So, I have to find that out.
Okay.
Maybe... I know who would know that. Okay, I'll take care of that too.
I just wanted to, are you thinking, Ed, that it'd be like the depreciation on the building kind of thing? Something like that, the wear and tear?
No, because the, the, the room over there, that, within the police station, so they're using, the cable TV is using electricity, they're using...
The air conditioning and the heat and all that.
And they're, they're tying up a room. And it would be, it would be, there, there should be some kind of compensation coming back to the town... From the cable TV to, I don't want to say the cable TV committee, but from the money that, that we receive from cable TV to reimburse the town for some of those expenses.
Right, I got it, I got it. One thing...
Well, what we could do is just prorate a piece out of the, we're talking electric, water and what, right?
If the total operating cost of the building were a thousand dollars...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it's a thousand square feet.
Right.
And they use a hundred square feet, they get ten percent allocated.
Right, perfect, I got it.
It's nice and simple math.
Denise will know when that all is all over.
You get that prorated, okay.
My other thing is, I know this is kind of over and above, but we really need to discuss the employees while we're doing all this and figure out, as before, when I was a chair before, I said, who manages the current employees that work on the cable? We don't have anyone that, and we're supposed to, I guess, but it never got resolved, who manages them, so...
I've never seen them on an organizational chart with the town.
No, that's, that's, that's an excellent point, and, and along with that...
I tried resolving it last time and it never got resolved.
Along with that, something I've been pushing for is a job description for the employees.
I got it, we never did it, remember we tried doing it and it...
Well, never did it, no.
Okay, so that piece of it's done. That, that, I got this under control. I got Bill Hewig, I'll talk with him, we'll get that taken care of.
Can I just ask, it's like woman Catherine Ellis, to share with me the background on all this? You know, how the supporting data all rolls up.
Right, so what I can send, I can actually just put it all into a folder and send it to, what I did is I took what Chris, who was the...
Yeah, yeah, just throw it all together.
Right, it's an Excel sheet, and then Denise had given me the salary and expenses, so she gave me everything else.
Love it.
So...
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm a data freak.
Yep, give you all of that. So I'll send that to everybody, or can I, should I just send it to you? I don't want to break rules, how do I do it? You just send it to Caitlin, okay, so I'll send the...
And she'll send it to Bill.
And then she can disseminate it too.
I'll put it in a folder.
Thank you much.
Yep.
Okay, so it sounds like we have everything under control, and we're waiting for Mike Wood's information, waiting for some of my information, and we're gonna be good. Okay.
Now, one other thing.
Yep.
Just one other thing on that. If we could get the amount of money that's, that the, that we pulled out of the cable TV money for use, for other than cable TV. Like I think we took some out for, for some cameras, we might have taken some out for some computer stuff. Just get an idea of, of how much in the last five years or so that, that's been pulled out for other things not related to, to cable.
Okay. All right, so are we good with the cable right now?
Not much really you can go with it right now.
I think we're, I think we're there. Kathy, are you good?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we have. I'm not sure what you're looking about for breakout. We have breakouts by year of salary versus expenses, and then we have Chris's list of equipment purchases and length of life. So, beyond that, I'll send you everything I got. Do you want it all in PDFs though, so you don't have to open it in different software things?
Say what?
PDFs, or do you want...
No.
You want it in...
Try to avoid a PDF if you can.
Okay, so I, no, I don't have to, it's all in different things, so...
If it's all in, if, much as in Excel, as I can get, I appreciate, and what, what you don't have, I'll take in a PDF and figure it out.
Okay, no, it's mainly in Excel, I think.
Okay, so moving on. We have the votes of the board to authorize the board, a board member to sign payroll and bill warrants for warrant twenty dash twenty-five. So that must be because of the holiday coming up in Town Hall, we're gonna be closing...
On the twenty-fourth and the twenty-third.
Denise called me and we talked about having the town employees before Christmas and New Year's, right, was it?
Yeah, so she sent that out today.
So, I don't care, I'll come by and do it, anyone can come by and do, whoever wants to do it, it's not a big deal.
I'm not going anywhere, so I don't mind either.
I just think that she wants to put a name on it.
I'm staying close to home.
The chairman would be the proper name, as if that's what I would do.
If it's available.
The twenty-third.
Yeah. Just send me an email and I'll come in and take care of it.
It's under votes for the board, so I would assume...
So we have to, I'll make a motion for Bill Dunn to sign the warrants, and is that it?
Mm-hmm, for twenty twenty-five.
To sign the warrants for twenty twenty...
Five.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
Caitlin, just get ahold of me when you need me to come in, please.
Will do.
Send me an updated email or whatever. Okay, so moving on.
We had a motion, we'll second, but I don't think we had any discussion of votes.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, now moving on. Issue amended two thousand nineteen liquor license to Kanji LLC Groveland Market, one Washington Street. Was that when he came in and we redid his license?
They, I believe they switched owners.
It was in here before us.
Yep.
Yep, so they must have did their final. So if I can get someone to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to amend the twenty nineteen liquor license to Kanji LLC Groveland Market, one Washington Street.
Second? Second, anyone?
Oh, second, I thought you were second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
All right, so now moving on, we can do these probably all as one, or we can do them individual. To vote to approve the sign, the following liquor license renewals for two thousand twenty. It's all basically businesses that have been up and running in the town. I'll go through the list, if you guys want to start me and vote on it, or if you want to do them all at the end, it's fine. Route ninety-seven Liquors, nine oh eight D Salem Street Package Store, all alcohol. Kanji LLC Groveland Market, one Washington Street Package Store, all alcohol. Jerry's Variety, fifteen Elm Park Package Store, wine and malt license. Nyrods Inc., one ninety-two Main Street Package Store, all alcohol. Nicole's Village, one Nicole's Way Club License. Pub ninety-seven, nine thirty-five Salem Street Restaurant License. Tea Garden, nine oh four Salem Street Restaurant License. Cedar Dale Swim Club, Tony Bear Hill Road, general on premises license. Groveland Fairways LLC, one fifty-six Main Street, general on premises license. And that's all of them, if someone wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve those.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. So moving on, we need to vote to approve the sign in Class Two used car license renewals for two thousand twenty. Again, really nothing has changed, it's just a renewal. And it's, the vote will be contingent upon receipt of all required paperwork. Salem Street Corp. Doing Businesses Price Right Auto, seven thirty-five Salem Street. Greenwood Auto Body, Richard Allen Greenwood, eight sixty-three Salem Street. Groveland Auto and Repair Sales, nine forty-four Salem Street. Fast Lane Motors LLC, nine twenty-three Salem Street. Cornerstone Motor Works LLC, Daniel P. Nithen, eight eight three Salem Street. If I can get a motion on them?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, the Class Two used car licenses for those listed. You want me to read them?
I just did it, yeah. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yep.
Okay.
That should be contingent upon receipt of all required paperwork.
Okay.
Is there any, Caitlin or the Rennie?
We're missing one for the Class Two auto license.
Okay, so it will be, it will be contingent on that person getting it for...
Yep, and I spoke to him last week and he said he was gonna get it in. I gave him a new package.
Go ahead.
I just had a question on it, I noticed there's like some of them have different conditions on how many cars they can have and where they have to be parked. And I was wondering, whose responsibility is it to inspect, and do they go out and inspect before we renew every year? Or is it only if there's a complaint? I just wondered...
Complaint usually, and it's the building inspector.
The building inspector, if it needed to be inspected, already went out and completed all the.
Right.
So did it need to, like, when we renew them, does he automatically go inspect them every year? And then when we get them, we should, we should assume that all these conditions have been met?
Only, only five, the restaurants needed to be inspected, and he did go out and did those back in October, November.
But also Kathy, if they have, if they've been before the zoning board of appeals, and if they're not, if they're not keeping up to their, what they set forth from the zoning board, I'm sure they'd be getting complaints and they'd be back before the zoning board as well, but the.
I was just wondering, like, as a matter of course, is, are, before we renew them, are they supposed to be inspected before we renew them or not? And the answer seems to be no. Do they have a periodic inspection thing or not?
Not that I would.
So just the restaurants do? Because at some point, I like to understand that, why we do it in some cases and we don't seem to do it in other cases. You know, because I have no idea how many cars these places have.
Yeah.
So.
Well, maybe we could turn around.
I'm gonna approve them, I just would like to know for informational purposes.
Right, okay. Alright, so where was I? Was that the discussion?
Yep.
And then Bill made a.
We seconded it.
Yep.
And we just had discussion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. So moving on, we have the vote approved and signed the following common vehicular license renewals for 2020.
All different colors, huh?
I know.
Vote to be contingent upon receipt of all required paperwork. We have Nicole's Village, 1 Nicole's Way. Terry Clifford, T and B Clifford, Doing Business at Pub 97, 935 Salem Street. J and S Restaurant Corp., Doing Business at Tea Garden Restaurant, 904 Salem Street. Cedar Dale Swim and Tennis Club, Groveland Inc., Tony Bear Hill Road. Robert Akalian, Doing Business of Groveland Fairways, 156 Main Street. Unlimited Perk Coffee Company Inc., 921 Salem Street. Nextine LLC, Doing Business as Nextine at Chestnut and Calf, 860 Salem Street. Riverside Pizza LLC, 180 Main Street. Patrick Regional School District, 253 Main Street. Conservation Commission, Doing Business VC, Memorial Park, 201 Washington Street. F and M Company LLC, Doing Business as Your Place and Ours at 8 Elm Park. Pizza Grove LLC, 990 Salem Street. Jeff and Maria's Ice Cream and Food, 928 Salem Street. So if I can get a motion on those.
Some move.
And second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. I'll sign these and then I'll just move on to the votes. Second?
Okay.
Backals with their packet.
Okay, so we just all sign these?
Just that front, Denise said, just the front section right there.
So one page that we sign?
Just that one section.
Okay.
So moving on, we have finance director's time.
There's nothing for finance director's time.
Okay, so moving on, we have selectmen's time, starting with Kathy.
I was wondering about the information we got on the capital plan and how we're planning to go about. Some of the plan includes everything, some departments told us everything, some departments did not. Like, some departments told us how many items they have of each category, and some didn't. And I suppose we're waiting for Denise to come back to figure out how to proceed on that.
Well, I personally think, when it comes to capital, I think that we should be getting pitches in years and makes and models of whatever condition, et cetera, et cetera, before we move forward with it. Because not having a capital board, I think it's our duty to at least ask those questions. So.
Maybe I missed an email. Didn't Denise just very recently send out?
A budget.
Capital request forms to all departments for just such a purpose?
And it came back.
Because we just.
Did it come back? Then that's the email I missed, I don't remember seeing it come back.
I thought it came back, right?
So I would go out to the departments.
She gave us something in her packet before she went out.
I was gonna say, I might not have been CC'd on it, because I don't deal with the budgets or anything.
Right, she gave us a packet before she left on capital. I can dig it out at some point, but it had some, it had information, but just, it wasn't always consistent. I think, I don't know if she's gonna have them resubmit that capital through that new software, but that new software, I thought, was just for the budgets, not capital.
Right, didn't something just come out last week that they submitted? I saw something come through with the list of all the different departments with all their stuff that they have. Like, the cemetery listed all their stuff, the highway, everyone listed everything.
But I might not have been CC'd on it.
Okay, alright, I just saw that come through the other day.
Okay.
Budget request, right here, December 2nd, 2:30 PM. And it does not look like you were CC'd on it. But good afternoon all, please find attached FY '21 budget package. Please be sure to read the entire package, the process is changing from prior years. So that's the budget package. As far as capital.
All I'm saying is, when the capital comes out, when we finally get all the capital requests, I would like to make sure that they come in with backup of what they need, that's all I'm saying. So if someone's looking for whatever, they put an explanation why they're looking for it. Okay, where are we? We're Kathy on?
Well, I'm looking, I'm just looking to see if I have, we received a pack, with our packet, before Denise went out. I, a listing of capital requests from all the departments in the form of a capital plan of some kind. And I just thought, oh, that's easy. I don't want to take up time right now, but I just thought we should put it on a future agenda, was my point, not that we discuss it now, but.
But I actually haven't seen their actual, each department come back with them yet.
Well, she had them do like a plan, like a five-year plan, and she, and like what I was saying, they wrote down, some of them wrote down the mileage and everything, and some of them didn't.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we need to get to the point. Let's just say, I haven't actually seen one, let's just say for the cemetery. I haven't actually seen theirs for this year, but when they do submit it, I want to be able to see the breakdown of what they need, why they need it, and the breakdown of everything.
Right, but I, what I was asking for is that we did get, and in our, you know, at the end of the packet, we get the information that she gives us for a future, we got a packet with the capital that they had submitted to her, like a five-year plan. I just wanted to see if we can put that going forward, you know, if you want to wait till Denise.
That's the five-year plan, but every year they come in.
Yes.
And they'll give us this year's.
Yes.
This go year, that what they're looking for, and before, I want to be able to see what, a breakdown of why they need it.
Right, but I wanted to, before we did that, I thought we should look at the five years, so we know over five years, how much stuff.
I did see that.
Right, because if you added that all up, that's a lot of money there.
Right.
I thought we should look at that.
Right.
In our, like, in January.
So we'll put down next meeting for an agenda item to talk about the capital, five-year plan.
I think the capital committee, when they were, when they were together, always produced a minimum of five-year plan.
Yeah, they did. But then, they're not here, so who's gonna do a five-year plan?
That is our responsibility.
Okay, so that's what we need to do. But you need the people in the departments to send over every, every, their request.
Yeah, like I said, I thought I saw it go out, but I don't remember seeing anything come back from the departments.
Okay, anything else, Kathy?
No, I think it was just that one outstanding item, I just wanted to make sure we took a look at that.
You got that?
Yep.
You got it, okay. Ed?
I don't, I don't have anything.
Okay, so under Selectmen's time and report, I was, I actually texted Denise and asked her about the decorations downtown, the Christmas decorations and all. She said the company last year stopped doing it, and I went down and did it. So I will go down and take care of putting up the kissing balls and decorating the pavilion and all that. So that will be taken care of, the snowstorm came and now it's melting, I'll try and get it done next week. I know the Christmas tree, oh, front was lit, the one downtown isn't lit, I gotta figure out what's going on that, that's the light department. And I haven't really heard of anything. I did hear a couple complaints about snow plowing. It was all complaints, which weren't major, major. I dealt with them with Rennie, Rennie was very good about dealing with me, and I think they're all resolved. And really, I haven't heard too much of any else. So that being said, I'll ask Bill, do you have any?
Just a couple of things. One, I don't like heights, but if I can do anything on the ground to help you out with the Christmas decorations, give me a call. I'd be glad to help. We have, our next high school building committee meeting is tomorrow, so I don't have anything to report on that. And our next recreation committee meeting is not until next week, so I don't have much to report on that. I do want to ask a question, point of order. Are we in fact meeting on December 23rd? I thought we had discussed that.
We did, we did discuss it and we weren't meeting. That's the purpose of getting Selectmen Dunn to sign the warrant, the 20-25 warrant. That was the purpose of that, because we wouldn't be meeting.
Right, I just noticed that the, the bottom, it is, the next scheduled is the 23rd. I just wanted to bring, make sure that was not the case.
So when's the next meeting?
January 6th.
So we'll change this from the time frame to January 6th.
And.
That will be 2020.
And with that said, I would just like to wish everyone a happy and healthy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, and to all the folks that work in the town, just appreciate and say thank you for all the work you do. I know it's seldom said, but it is very much appreciated. Keep up the good work, and hopefully, we all have a very successful, happy, and safe and healthy New Year. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Old or unfinished business? Anyone?
I have nothing.
Other items not responsibly anticipated at this time of posting? Anyone?
I just follow up on the, on the snowstorm. I thought the highway department did a really great job. I know there's always gonna be some things that get, you know, missed, but they did a phenomenal job.
It wasn't they missed, it was just people complaining that snow was putting their driveway and what have you. It's like I said, I'm not bad mouthing, they did a great job.
Yeah, I thought they did.
The town was very clean and good, and I know that, I was talking with the highway supervisor, they lost three trucks during the storm, so they were crippled and they still got the job done. I'm not, that's not a complaint, I was just saying that people, that's the only thing I heard since our last meeting.
And just to follow up on this town, it's a great, small town, and talking to the new fire chief, and he's seeing it for the first time through new eyes. You forget all the little things that are great about our town, that the way people help each other out, the way people pitch in when people are out sick, like Caitlin is, like Rebecca does, like Tracy does, and and they just always step up here, and they did in the fire department during the absence of a chief. And sometimes you take a lot of that for granted in this town, that it's a real pretty, small town, and has a great heart, and people really help each other out a lot. And I hope everybody has a really great holiday, because I'm happy to be here and happy that we're having a holiday. Thanks.
Okay.
I do have something to say about the highway department. I have a criticism and a, and I guess a compliment. Usually after a snowstorm, I look out my window and the streets are bare of snow. And I jump out there thinking, "This is great, it's not that bad," until I cross over into the Georgetown line or cross over into Haverhill, and then I realize, wow, it's pretty bad. So kudos to the folks out there doing the plowing, but you've always given me a false sense of security that the storm isn't as bad as it really is, because you plowed the roads so stinking good, that I think it's okay to get out there, and then I get stuck somewhere. That's it.
Okay, so then we have the correspondence in the minutes from the November 25th, 2019 meeting. Okay? And before we adjourn, I would like to thank all the volunteers in the town of Groveland for all their hard work for the past year, and you are very well appreciated. I would like to thank all the town employees of all their hard work, and I hope everyone has a great holiday, and a safe holiday. And we will adjourn at, I can't see up there.
We'll do it George, at 7:56.
7:56, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.